...of Mrs. LaShnona, because I wanted to know if they were going to do things properly. And by asking those questions, she answered for me in positive. So I would support this going forward and feel that this is the right thing to do. And I actually feel that this piece of property would speak well to this sort of thing without any converging problems for me.
Any other comments from council members?
Can I ask, for Council Soltz's experience with respect to pig manure? I mean, I always hear that that is an incredible problem.
Industrial manure, yes.
What do you do about that?
Well, we had compost piles or compost bins that we put it in and it would have been added to the other soil, to amend the soil as it was composting. There may be better ways in this day and age to deal with that sort of thing. And, yep, that definitely was a problem, but we live pretty close, so we didn't see it as an issue. And so then, having grown up in an area where there was, near where I was, had my hobby farm, there was a commercial pig operation, and they dealt with that on a whole different issue. And if you know one thing about pigs, is that pig people are extremely clean. They have to be, or their animals will not survive. Whereas dairy people, and not against dairy people, but dairy animals will be walking in their fecal matter up to their knees and not have an issue. And that's where the problem was.
So, Council Nixon, you wish to say something?
Just, Your Worship, I'm leaning to supporting this going forward after hearing Council Holtz and his experience. I have family members in Fruitvale that run hobby farms and raise their kids raising pigs, chickens, everything else. But I don't remember their farm standing next to me either.
Any other comments from council? We have official community plan amendment by law 2134, be read a third time. All those in favor? Against? Motion is carried. And the next motion?
That zoning amendment by law 2137, be read a third time.
Motion by Council Nixon, seconded by Council Sols. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Against? Motion is carried. And that ends our public hearing on Highway 23 North. We'll take a couple-minute break for those people that wish to agree and walk the stage as long as you like. And other people? I think Soltz has come in. This is usually happened. It's got time.
Oh, yeah, you're...
I'm in. Thank you. So, is he here? I think he has people come in from the hallway.
I did.
People came in?
Yeah.
All right. I'm looking for an opportunity to not worry this.
Yeah, I know. I've got a nice little...
Is there any other people in the hallway for the next one?
I'm never tired of hearing you eat that.
Sorry?
I'm never tired of hearing you eat that.
I'm just waiting for one councillor to come back and I'm going to start, just in case you were wondering what I'm doing. Great? Or no? I was wondering why you... This public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council. And all persons present who believe their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given the opportunity to address council or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Those of you which wish to speak concerning the proposed bylaw should commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and address. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. Please observe the rules. If you have any concerns with the manner in which the hearing is conducted, direct your comments to the chair. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members today is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Everyone should be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. In considering the proposed bylaw, council has received documents which may influence its decision. These documents are available for review in a binder located at the signed table. Before we begin, may I have the corporate officer confirm that all due process is followed according to the Local Government Act?
Yes, Your Worship, for 1918 Aspen Crescent, I have received five submissions from neighboring properties, all in opposition.
We do have a speaker's list set up, and I will go through that speaker's list. Again, I will have at least three opportunities for the public to address council. And before we begin, I can ask Mrs. Strachan, does she have a presentation for us?
Very grateful, Your Worship, for your time. Support bedroom, full location, with all of Becky worship.
First person on the speaker's list that has indicated they wish to speak is Claire Israelson.
Good afternoon. I'm, I live in 1920 Ashman Crescent on the property next door. There was a previous zoning application on our street earlier this fall, and I supported that one because the owner came to us and talked to us as neighbors and indicated how he was going to manage the property and that he would be on their in-place, full-time resident in the property. In this instance, there hasn't been any consultation whatsoever with the opponent. The assumption seems to be that they'll simply move in and destruct the neighborhood and neighbors be damned. I am highly skeptical of the capacity for the city to enforce bylaws that might restrict inappropriate activity on the property. And for those reasons... Oh, and finally, at the corner of Aspen Crescent and Hay Road, there's a vacation property there now that is a royal pain in the ass. Vehicles parked out onto the driving lane of the, of the, of Hay Road. Just an attitude of, "We're here and there's nothing you can do about it." It's a safety hazard for traffic trying to exit Hay Road or exit Aspen Crescent onto Hay Road. And we put up with that all the way, and we don't need any more of that in our neighborhood. So I urge council to recheck the application.
Okay, thank you. Next person on the list is Nikki Lucier.
Hello, I'm Nikki Lucier, and I live at 1932 Aspen Crescent. The reason why I'm opposing this vacation rental is for my family and for my community, my neighborhoods. Currently, we have four vacation rentals operating, and if this one is approved, plus there's one other one on January 10th, there will be six within a block and a half of our house. My children, I have three children, they have friends that live just down Hay Road, and so they have to pass all of those vacation rentals to go see their friends. Last year, I was taking my daughter and her friend to go to Bogning, and we could smell marijuana in the air. The other rental had stacks and stacks of empties in the back. This is just not a community that I want my family to grow up in, and it's just disheartening to see. Last night, we had a truck circling our crescent with snowboarders being towed. I don't know where they came from, but this was happening on our crescent. We often have skidoo circling our crescent as well, because we don't have a lot of homes right now. They are being developed though. And so I know, as council, you've had to make some difficult decisions in the past, and I know when you stuck to your original plan, it's turned out. And I just, I just plead with you. I know you don't have a policy at the moment for density, for the number of vacation rentals allowed in a certain area, but six is far, far too many. And especially when we're trying to make this our community and our home, and we've got kids. So I'd like you to think about your own children, your grandchildren, your friends and relatives that come, and please make Revelstoke a place that you want to be and not a neighborhood that you don't want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Jill Lucier.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. I too am from 1932 Aspen Crescent, and I'm not going to repeat what my wife so well said about what we were hoping for as a community. It feels unfair, in fact, that as residents, we have to come forth and request that our neighborhood remain as zoned and that we have a chance of building a community and a neighborhood. That shouldn't be something that we have to come forth and make a case for. It should go without saying that that is what the zoning is, it's what we bought into. And essentially, what the whole basis of us moving into that neighborhood was based on was the fact that we were going to have a community with our neighbors. We've got great neighbors now. It's nice that we can have each other into our homes, have a relationship, you know, share the neighborhood burdens, and I don't think that having the mix of vacation rentals in the middle of it is doing a service to the community. We've done our share and made our sacrifices for this quota that's been set that maybe should be revisited. But our neighborhood has already seen some rezoning. It's done its share, and I don't think we should be asked to sacrifice anymore. Thank you.
Next person on the list indicating they wish to speak is Holly Rosenberg.
I'm just her backup. I'm ready to call Maggie, who has spelled these all together.
So you're definitely a no on the next one after this call, or are you...
We reside at 1933 Aspen Crescent. This is the third 100-meter notification we've received in the last several months. 1912 was, was approved, and it's been a non-issue. We're here today in opposition of the rezoning of 1918 Aspen Crescent, largely in part because I'm concerned about the density allowance. Is, is there a cap in place on, on what that, what that should be or, or not? And if not, can I ask that council, and can you look at that today, for going forward? I just, you know, I'm with Nikki and Jill Lucier and all the other neighbors on this in that we bought in, we left homes in Calgary, we left family in Alberta, we bought in a quiet neighborhood. Downtown was even too busy for us. Our children walk to school. There are no sidewalks, there's no bus pickup. They have to cross construction zones and construction traffic now to get to school. And now we ask that they have to be careful when they walk out onto the road that there aren't speed vehicles and lost people and additional chaos.
Council, Mayor, you guys have all heard today from the soft standpoint of families. Holly and I actually own a vacation rental. It's zoned, it's in the industrial park, it's away from residential areas, away from families. We're pro-business. We've got two businesses to Revelstoke, brought our kids here. Our big concern is transience, crime, issues in our neighborhood. If you want a vacation rental, buy in a certain place, buy in a Kansas County town. Our neighborhood doesn't even be a vacation property. Build it somewhere, or you guys own it. One more thing, if you're not all good. Everybody who's applying to this has to pay somewhere around $1,800. All of us here live in Aspen, we're going to fight every single one of these. So maybe you need to tell these people, don't waste your time. Because we will show up for every single one of them. If we want to be a family, a neighborhood, keep our kids safe.
Thank you.
Floor is open for this public hearing on Aspen Crescent. Does anybody would like to speak to this? Yes, sir. Please step over to the microphone, say your name, put the podium, your name and address.
Is there a microphone?
I know.
My name is Harrison Howard, and I reside at 1084 Shady. I just happened to be walking by, so I didn't give it a lot of time to get my words together, but I'm just going to look at what's going on in the neighborhood's fighting world. I come from Calgary, $300,000 when I grew up, it's a million. I couldn't stop the growth, and I had no choice in it. Right now, you have an opportunity. The opportunity is vacation rentals. It brings money to the economy, and it has a trickle-down effect, and it affects everybody in a positive way. By denying someone an opportunity to have a livelihood and to chase their own dreams down because your neighborhood, you don't want that, you have to give people a chance to succeed. And by stopping them right out of the gates because you have this philosophy that the people coming here are going to be alcoholics, they're going to disturb the public, and they're going to be transient, I disagree. I travel. I go to Hawaii, I go to Victoria. Want to stay there now? My friends, we book a vacation rental. And what I say is get something close to downtown, get me something close to the hill. When we go there, we're 40, we're not 19, and we handle it differently. And it wouldn't matter where we stayed, as a 40-year-old, you just treat life differently. And the people that are coming here are coming here with a lot of money. You know what I mean? The trickle-down effect, the eight people spending $300 a day here in town is huge. It creates jobs, it creates economies. And being concerned about parking and all these problems, we're going to have to look at the issues as they come up. But there's an opportunity right now. If you have a problem with parking, employ a truck driver to tow those vehicles. You know what I mean? Like monitor it, create, create, create with all this money that's coming in. And just to have people come up here and say, "No, this isn't what I want. I don't want growth." You know what I mean? "I don't want opportunity now." It's, I don't know, I think it's a bit short-sighted. You know what I mean? Because as a community, we should just be supporting the neighbors and all their dreams and aspirations, right? And just, if there's a problem, address the problem there. But to assume there's going to be a problem because you're bringing people here that want a vacation, it's not true. I come here for a vacation, I ended up moving here. And I think you're going to have the same thing with the people that come here on vacation and spend money. They're going to decide, you know what? "I like what's going on here." And they're going to leave their money behind, they're going to purchase real estate, they're going to drive the economy. So I take a different stance, and I imagine there's a lot of other people in the community that just don't have the interest to come here today to speak. But the people that are speaking are all saying in a negative way, but I think if we took a positive approach to this problem, we wouldn't have a problem, there's a solution. But that's just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Floor is open for comments on zoning amendment by law 2151, which is 1918 Aspen Crescent. Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Pam Mara, I live at 1842 Hay Road. I back onto this property, that's my question. And although I don't foresee necessarily it being a huge problem with the people who are going to be at this vacation rental, we don't know what they're going to be like, as the last judge has said, but I have seen a huge change in the neighborhood. Like Claire mentioned, the one on the corner that's already operating, it causes huge traffic problems, and there's a lot of noise in the neighborhood. There are snowmobiles driving up and down the road, people getting cold on, on snowboards behind the trucks, and it's really changing our neighborhood. You can't walk your dog, you can't let your kids walk to school on the road because you just don't know what they're going to experience or what they're going to smell on their way to school. So I'm just, I just want to speak from the point of view that it's really changing our neighborhood. It's disappointing to the people who bought into it as a family differently.
Floor is open. Mr. Topen?
Your Worship, Council. My name is Brian Topen, I live on 1089 McCarty Crescent, and most of you people know that I've been down this road before. What's really crazy about all this is that people come here and to build a house, it's a half a million dollars, and you have a dream, and you have an idea, and you do your research, and you get yourself a nice quiet community, and it has some restrictive covenants, and then all of that's blown out the window because you just, because council's decided that there's a nightclub beside it. And that, that's precisely what happens. So there are lots of homes in Revelstoke that have suites in them, where people are upstairs, they live in it, or it's, I don't care if it's a side, whatever, whatever it is that works, works. But if the owner's there, then the guest is accountable. And, and so, I mean, we have a council here that says they were elected on a pro-business platform, and that seemed to drive some of this for a while, until they realized that it, it's not working. And I, I was here last fall when there was quite a heated rejection of an applicant who has been running for a long, long time, and he's, and you guys closed him down, but he's still running all summer and all winter. And so it, there's another part of this, and it's, you, you can't predict what the, what the, the activity of the guest is going to be, whether they're driving down your road at 70K or testing out their snowmobiles after they've offloaded them off of their trucks and do a garage or whatever it is they're doing. But the, the bylaw enforcement end of it is, is really, really discouraging. It's because I've, I've been surrounded by it myself in my neighborhood, and you phone, and if it happens Friday night, forget it. Nothing's happened until Monday morning, at which time it's too late because those people are long gone. And I, I, it seems to me that this process, it was interesting, a gentleman that said, kind of warned you folks, if there's a future applicant for Aspen, tell them that we're going to, we're going to, we're going to come enforce and we're going to do this. It seems to be a very wasteful process. I, I don't, I don't understand how you can allow someone's neighborhood, their, their quiet community, to be transformed, whether, I've used the expression before, whether it's a staging area for Boulder Mountain or beside a nightclub. Because that's either one, that's what it feels like. And, and nobody here bought into that, or they wouldn't be here to complain. They, they moved to Aspen Crescent. They didn't choose West Side Road or, or First Street beside the Traverse. So I, I just think this whole thing is so flawed and such a massive waste of resource, of, of your time, of everyone's time, fighting this. I don't know, just, we go round and round. It's a hamster wheel to me. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well, I would like to make a couple of comments on some of your comments, Brian, and for the public, is that we, as a, as a council in City Hall, have decided to be proactive on vacation rental, and the process that we have, which is going through rezoning and public hearing, is a legal process. There's, there's a proper way and a legal way that it has to be done. People have a right, when they have property, to look at rezoning. It is then up to staff and council to decide, is it valid enough to go to the public for comments, which is the process that we're in? We're trying to get a handle on vacation rental and, because vacation rental is not going to go away. The question is, how can we make vacation rental fit into our community, be a part of the community, so that we can all live with it? And sometimes we can't. That's the decision that the people around the table are going to have to make. And I know that it takes time from, from the people, and it, sometimes it upsets the neighborhood balance, but there is processes, whether you think they, they work or not, but there's processes being put in place to deal with problem vacation rentals. And I've heard about one a couple times today, and, and I'm going to be asking staff after the council meeting to, to look into this and find out what's going on. But I would always encourage people that if there is a problem in the neighborhood with vacation rental, legal or illegal, you have to let us know, because we can't do something about it if we don't know about it. And I hear all kinds of comments in my neighborhood about things, but they don't come to City Hall, and I get the comments after the fact that there's a problem. Well, I can't do anything about it after the fact. But I can tell you is that all the comments mean a lot to the people around the table and at City Hall, because we're concerned, and if I've said it once, I've said it a thousand times, vacation rentals have to be a good neighbor. And if they're not a good neighbor, they're going to be in trouble. So I know to some of you it may be discouraging, but this is the process that we have, and we're trying to make it work, and we're trying to get a handle on it. We are going to be looking at it over the next year quite a bit. We've set a cap on 125 bedrooms. And so a lot of people are jumping in, and that's why we have so many public hearings, because the cap is coming to an end, and then council is going to have to make a decision. Staff are going to give us a report. But I can tell you is the report means a heck of a lot more when we're hearing comments from the public on what, what's being done right and what's being done wrong. This is the process that we have, and we're going to work with it. A lot of other communities are just putting their head in the sand, which we've done for a few years on vacation rental. We're trying to get a handle on. So I'm off my soapbox now and I back over to the public for comments on this public hearing on 1918 Aspen Crescent. So the floor is open. Just please again state your name and address for the record.
Julie Ralph, and I live at 1938 Aspen Crescent. And I just want to let everybody know that I'm here to oppose the vacation rental, 1918, because we've been up there for a couple of years, half a year, and we've noticed a significant difference in the area, excuse me, since these vacation rentals, whether they're legal or not legal, have been operating in the area. It doesn't matter if it's winter or summer, we've noticed the open alcohol, and that's beer, 26ers, it doesn't matter, they're going up the street on skateboards or scooters, snowmobiles, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. And racing up and down the streets, I realize it might not be one particular home And racing up and down the streets, I realize it might not be one particular home, but since those ones have all opened, well, like I said, whether they're legal or illegal operations, it has changed. So that's why we're here opposing the one on 1918 Aspen Crescent.
Floor is open for the public on this public hearing.
Hello, hi, my name is Caitlin Shaw, I live at 1928 Hay Road. I'm actually here today to support the application. My boyfriend and I, we recently bought into the neighborhood. We do realize that it's a fluid, changing neighborhood. We understand that we're going to be living in a construction site for the next 15, 20 years ongoing, with the Mackenzie Village development across the way. On that note, you're allowing somebody to go on an industrial scale and create vacation rentals across the way, however restricting sometimes others on the other side of the same opportunity. So we do support the application, we know the area is changing, there's a lot of construction, there's a lot of new homeowners and yeah, we are in support.
Thank you. Floor is open and going over to the public for a second time on 1918 Aspen Crescent.
My name is Almen, I'm at 1940 Aspen Crescent, and I'm here in opposition of the zoning amendment for 1918. Our subdivision, there is provision for legal secondary suites that is allowed in the properties. So for a vacation rental, vacation rental is a business. They advertise, they operate the same as a hotel, they do all the same procedures. To put a commercial property in a residential neighborhood does not make sense. As all of the neighbors have stated, the amount of questionable activity, the amount of disturbance to the neighborhood, the amount of dangerous driving. I drive down the road, I've seen the vacation rentals in question where the 20-foot sled trailer with the one ton duly in the front is parked halfway into the lane on Hay Road, people are swerving around it, snow removal doesn't work very well, it's a problem. Subdivision allows the secondary suites, this is a normal thing that people can do, they can, they don't have to come and rezone it, that was why the property was set up, that's why we bought into it so that we could supplement it. To go, the next stage to go to vacation rentals is to move to a commercial operation. This does not belong in a residential neighborhood, especially in that area. There's no accountability to keep these places in line, you can call bylaw enforcement, bylaw enforcement officers, we only have two, and they only operate, to my knowledge, during the day. If this has changed, please correct me. So our concern is that we are allowing commercial operations in a residential subdivision, it doesn't make sense. It makes more sense to put down an industrial park, they have units down there, they're very well suited for vacation rentals downtown where it's expected that there is going to be noise. The other issue is parking. When you allow a four-bedroom house to be a vacation rental, you bring four more vehicles, none of these properties have room for those vehicles. There's no room, especially in the winter, for the increased amount of snow removal. We see it all the time in the rest of our community where people have parked on the road, whether they're allowed to or not, snow removal comes, the greater loader has to swerve around. It now costs us taxpayers more to send that loader out, again, to clean that. It is adding more cost. Yes, does it bring more money into the community to spend 300 bucks a night into a vacation rental? Yes, it does. But that is a business, it is not a residential home. So I ask that you please do it as such. Thank you.
Floor is open for the public for a second time on this public hearing for 1918 Aspen Crescent. The floor is open. Disserve.
Hi, Jill Lucie, 1932 Aspen, sorry if I could, just I've heard a couple of things brought up and I just wanted to clarify. And it was a good point brought up, that Mackenzie Landing came up in discussion and I think there's a clear distinction with this particular zoning that we're here today for rather than Mackenzie Landing. That was a hearing in advance of, like I was looking at the zoning for the entire property in advance of construction. This is an entirely different situation. This is a community now with residences, with families in them, and this is an application for the zoning to be part of that mix. And we realize that some of the issues being brought up are enforcement issues. That is true, but what council has to remember is what makes a good mix, as you said yourself, Your Worship. And overwhelmingly, we're hearing that this just isn't a good mix for the same reason you wouldn't have a hotel mixed with a senior's extended care facility in the interest of trying to get some beds available to the public. We have to, based on the evidence of what we're seeing, see what makes a good mix and this is clearly not a good mix in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from council? Going over to the public for a third and final time, are there any comments on this public hearing for 1918 Aspen Crescent? Third and final time. Looking for a motion to close this public hearing, Council Nixon, Council Riddell, all in favor, motion is carried.
Your worship, offering forward for discussion purposes, zoning amendment by law 2151, pre mail, for the challenge.
Motion by Council Nixon, so they're going to be Council sells, discussion on the Sir, I'm distracted.
Your worship, I'm not going to be supporting this one going forward. I really thought Aspen Crescent was being developed, put it in a logical place for vacation homes to go, but maybe if it had been planned that way and people knew they were going into a subdivision that had vacation homes in it, I think would be a whole lot easier. And I understand how the families are feeling. You know, Aspen Crescent right now looks a little bit like Fraggle Rock, the destruction that's going on there. And people are just looking for a neighborhood feeling to be able to raise their children in. And I really support if this was for a suite only or above garage, and I'm totally supportive of that concept, but not.
Counciler Luke.
The, when we first started this process, or at least when Aspen Crescent was going in that area, I think as Council Nixon said, the idea was that this was going to become a perfect area for these types of vacation rentals. And what we're finding is that, what's happening is this area is becoming a residential area. And so it's incumbent upon us, I think as councillors, to make sure that if we do have vacation rentals, they blend into that neighborhood and that community. Because that's first and foremost what we need, is good neighbors and good neighborhoods for our community. And I think part of our process is learning about enforcement and I am hopeful that this council will, in the long run, find a solution to making sure these vacation rentals are enforced so that we don't run into difficulties that we're hearing about. But you know, I think the nature of this area has changed from what we thought how it would be developed and so I'm not going to support this one because I think, I think we need to preserve it as a neighborhood community with that philosophy. They have enough vacation rentals right now to buy this purpose.
And I think that's the point that I was, wanted to make when I was listening to the public comments and making some notes, you know, how many in an area is enough? And keeping in mind that we did approve Mackenzie Village across the street and to me, that is a big factor in what else is going on in the neighborhood and I don't know what will happen in the future in this area. And I'm a little bit confused and I'm going to talk to staff about it afterwards, is that, you know, how many units are legal in this area, how many are in process and how many are illegal? Because just for the public's information is that we have changed our position on vacation rental where we are going into active enforcement, we're finding out where the illegal ones are and we are making them either shut down or go through a process to be legal and compliant. And there's life safety issues and off-street parking issues and things like that that get looked at in the process. But going back to the comments that I made earlier, where we're trying to get a handle on vacation rental and get ahead of it and come up with policy, and I think that one of those policies that we have to take into consideration is how many are in 100 meters or 500 meters or in an area because I think that that's really important to the quality of life in the neighborhood, is how many is enough or how many is too many. But again, I can't reiterate enough or emphasize enough that if there's a problem, we need to hear about it and whether you think that anything is going to happen or not, I can tell you is if we don't hear about it, nothing is going to happen and we're not going to know about it. So I am agreeing with the neighborhood and I will be voting against this. Is there any other comments from council? Councilor Sullis?
I'll kind of echo what all of you said. Blending into the community is the whole idea of having vacation rental. And as Mayor McKee has said many times, being a good neighbor is really important. What we've tried to stress is, for those of you who are applying for vacation rental, owe your neighbor first, speak to them, make sure they're all on board before you lay your money down. And you'll know where you stand because this is getting to be an expensive process for some and a dangerous process for the community. So again, as I mentioned, I think things should blend in, this doesn't appear to be one that will blend in and unfortunately, those who've gone before have caused significant problems, so I will not support this one forward.
Is there any other comments from council? Mr. Strachan.
Just very briefly, Your Worship, the particular property in question on Aspen Crescent has been creating, concerning, creative question, most recently is illegal unlicensed vacation rental. And this is the second problem with council's effort on vacation rentals is to enforce against those enforcement's already been against that property in regards to these issues. But it's part of the problem with having an unregulated, unlicensed, is we go through the process to try and locate the property or try and do an investigation of what's happening at this property and then deal with it versus simply calling them or the business license.
Good, thank you. Motion on the floor is zoning amendment by law 2151, to be read a third time. Motion is to approve. All those in favor? Against? Motion is denied. This ends the public hearing for zoning amendment by law 2151, which is 1918 Aspen Crescent. Is there anybody in the hall? I don't think anybody even came in. So we're going to be moving into zoning amendment by law 215 to vacation rental 1706 McKinnon Road. The comments in the opening statement for public hearing is going to apply. And going back to the corporate officer to confirm that all the process was followed according to the local government.
Yes, Your Worship, I received one letter of opposition, we would expect to have a vacation rental.
And I do have a speaker's list set up, but again, I will be going out to the public a minimum of three times for any comments on this vacation rental for 1706 McKinnon Road. And Mr. Strachan, you have the brief presentation, of course.
Very, very briefly, Your Worship, as noted, it is a three-bedroom full vacation rental.
Okay. On the speaker's list, I have one person that indicated that they wish to speak and
I'm Councilwoman at 1688 McKinnon, which is right next to 1706. And I'm opposed to having a vacation rental in our neighborhood right there because I feel like many of the people that have bought and moved into our neighborhood recently with children were under the impression it's single-family residential. And I feel that we changed the face of the neighborhood too drastically, we're concerned about, I'm concerned about parking, I'm concerned about noise. We have a daycare center directly behind us and I think that's highly appropriate. And recently, vacation rental has been through three houses away, so there may be others operating in the neighborhood that are not legal and I just think it's something that I oppose.
I have nobody on the speaker's list, the floor is open.
Yeah, my name's James Evans, I'm the owner of 1706 McKinnon Road. I totally agree with Candy, but I came to Revelstoke for the community. I have a one-year-old daughter, well, she's 11 years old, I intend on staying here full time. My family is from New Zealand and Australia, a combination, so we intend on spending a month, two months a year, every season. I want to do it legally, so adversely doing that legally is going through the right process and I feel this is the right process. I like what the council's done. Before this, if I had purchased this property and spent $200,000 renovating it last year, I would do that. You know, I could go out and I could rent it out and it was open slather, as you guys know, you're proactive, brought in this vacation rental by law B zone, which I agree with. And you know, like basically, spending this sort of money, coming to this community, supporting the community, you know, the mountain's there, it's a beautiful place to be and people have come to this town. There's something like 120 or so vacation rentals, designated for. The place is, you know, and so, you know, literally, I'm not here to abuse it, I'm not here to leave the town, I'm just here to temporarily go on vacation and rent it
My name is Kathy Hutton, I live at 1691 Double Drive. I oppose this. What bothers me the most is the zoning. I've never met the people who are wanting to do this, they'd never come to us to tell us what their plans were, which bothers me. When you change a zoning from residential to this commercial, which is what it is, you're changing the whole atmosphere of the neighborhood. We've had illegal vacation rentals before on our street, on Double Drive. At one point, it was at one end of the street and the other end of the street, I'm stuck in the middle. Parking was so bad, you could get a single vehicle through, fire truck, no. I was vulnerable to my house burning, I did not feel safe in my home. The partying that goes on, drugs, the smell, the street just gets shut down and the people who come in now, they seem very nice. Who's to say what's going to happen in a year? Who's to say what's going to happen in a year or two? They may go on to other places. We now are stuck with this zoning. Another person comes in, starts their business, and like you say, the good neighbor thing, how do you probably guarantee that the next people aren't responsible? If these two people are responsible, I don't know, I don't know them. But if the next people that move in are unresponsible, that bothers me. It's in my backyard. Anyways, that's my, that's my, that's my issue. Thank you.
Floor is open, if anybody would like to speak to this zoning amendment bylaw.
My name's Gary Brody, my address is 1607 Dowell Drive. Listening here, I'm not really prepared for the speech or whatever, but it seems that every neighbor in the neighborhoods has the same concerns with the loud noise, the drinking, the drugs, the people ripping around, inadequate parking and stuff. Like, this is not something that we signed up for. And, I mean, to put it on the neighborhood, I don't think it's really fair. Maybe a person could look at new subdivisions, have a clause in there that this is gonna, this is gonna happen, vacation rentals can be put in, but just to blindside people with this, I don't think it's very fair. Most people have put their life savings into their home, keep the business in the business area, keep the residential areas as residential areas. It's not working, there's a lot of problems. You say you don't hear about a lot of the problems, but there's obviously problems that people aren't reporting, so what are we giving into? Let's just look at that before we approve things like this.
Floor is open.
I found one record of being in support of his opportunity. You guys want to make a vote, and I've just seen you vote down too, just fair enough to answer, but for his situation, he has a child, that's what he wants to do with his life. He wants to be able to take that child and go back home to Australia. There's an opportunity here for vacation rentals. And sure, he's going to rent his home out, and there will be problems, but giving him a chance to deal with it first, he has an opportunity here to fulfill his dreams, and this economy is limited, there's not a lot of jobs, there's not a lot of jobs. And when Telus put in the high-speed internet, it created an opportunity for people to move here that work from their home. Real estate prices went up when the optic lines were dropped in their homes. Does that mean some of the people are not working, making lots of money, working from home at the end of their optic line? Yes, that's true. Does that change their property to commercial? No. Just because they work from their home doesn't mean it's a commercial property. That's not, that's not true. And for vacation rentals, you're living into the days, you don't need 220 days, it's just the ski season that you can extract the money, and you can extract a lot of it. And it makes a difference in this, kids, one, it's going to provide money for them to go home to visit their grandparents. And if you say no to this one, this one, you're making a mistake, because give him a chance to fail, give him a chance to succeed, you know what I mean? And I strongly just say, embrace change, be thankful that you have an opportunity of vacation rentals, and you have a chance to grab some of this true worthless dollar. And the people that you're marketing to up there, I mean, it's a higher percentage of money for the triple down factor, because those people will go on the ski, they will go to the restaurants, they will leave behind money, and will create jobs, and it's for his daughter, she might go take over the home and have a business for herself, you know what I mean? And I think, I think a lot of people in the community, when they look back at it and they realize that this can be a good thing, and that the next generation might have an opportunity, I think they'll be, in the long run, they're scared today, but I think in the long run, they'll look back and say, wow, we're blessed to be able to offer vacation rentals, and that'd be an option for the next generation. So, I would just ask that you just vote this one in, you know what I mean?
Thank you. Floor is open on this vacation rental.
I'm Monica Davis, and my residence is 1705 Dowell Drive, direct access to the subject property. I haven't really, I sent a letter, I haven't really planned to say anything today, because I'm not good at public speaking, but I feel that this is something that is concerning to me. I've spent a lot of time, my husband and I, looking to find the property that we wanted to raise our children in, and we chose this area because of the quality of the neighborhood. We want to raise our kids in a neighborhood with neighbors that we know full-time. We don't want to look in the backyard...